It's six o'clock and. Well, there you go in a row. Welcome to the County Commission, uh, June twentieth meeting and our brand new digs here. This is fantastic. Hope you enjoyed a wonderful day. I'd like to call the meeting to order and Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Odera.
Here.
Those are also here. Do it stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think, uh, I have three years of public hearing. There is not five or four are comments from the public. You just state your name and if you're not from Albany County, tell us what your town and state you're from. That would be great if you're from Albany County. We'll just act like that is a given. So, um, we'll go in, uh, in person here initially. How about online? Would you like to make a public comment from the online? Okay, last chance for public comment in person and online. If you're online, you can just, uh, unmute yourself, raise your hand. Okay, Commissioners, I entertain a motion to close the public comment.
So, second.
Moving to second and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, got all the favors, signify by saying aye please.
Aye, aye.
Uh, opposed, same side. That motion carries. Item five, disclosures, Commissioner Jones, any disclosures?
Nope, none today.
You wish, I very.
I have none.
And I have none also. Item six, considerations of changes to the agenda.
So I talked with school board today. Apparently the, there was miscommunication and red board funding is not being approved until July nineteenth. So I need to remove fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
Wow. I'm not getting a gold star.
All right.
They'll be on your first meeting in August.
Okay, thank you. Bailey, any other changes to the agenda? And seven, approval consent agenda.
I move that we put consent agenda as, um, presented.
Moving to second. Hearing and seeing, got all the favors, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. That motion carries. Thank you. That moves us down to page two, item eight on the regular agenda. Discussion update from the Laramie Regional Airport Board. Considered recommendation for additional funding request to be included in the Albany County budget fiscal year twenty twenty-four. May be good evening. Floor is yours.
Good evening Chairman Gosar Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. Um, we attached a letter in the pack and I was going to read it to you, um, and then talk a little bit about it. In here it says, Dear Commissioners, I'm requesting consideration for additional budget requests for the Laramie Regional Airport. We are requesting these funds to assist with purchasing heaters in the ARF building and de-icing fluid for the runways. As the airport is continuing the growth of revenues, however, it has become difficult to fund projects while maintaining the level of maintenance, equipment replacement, and match requirements on FAA grants. The airport appreciates the funding already under consideration and will utilize those funds to continue working towards self-sustainability and future goals. The Laramie Regional Airport and current board members have had many successes this past year. The team worked diligently to bring the airport into compliance with partnering oversight agencies. Some of these successes include bringing forty-five FAA violations into compliance, SkyWest audit was a success, the DEQ compliance, homeland security compliance, as well as numerous outstanding grant assurances. This one or the, the airport was, or this winter, the team was able to maintain safe, open runways as well as provide aircraft de-icing to private aviators. The fuel farm and fuel trucks have been updated to meet all FAA part one thirty-nine requirements as well as ATA one oh three at DEQ compliance. We have implemented daily and monthly quarterly assurance procedures and many of these, or many of the accomplishments by this team have been corrections to outstanding issues for years. Additionally, the airport has successfully completed three years of audit and now we are, and now we are in the finite, or the final fiscal year of two thousand twenty-two with Carver Florid James, um, and we should be on track with the state audit requirements moving forward. So essentially, we've been playing catch-up and we find ourselves in compliance on all items last, last year, um, going into, the first year we were there, we had fourteen to sixteen FAA write-ups, significant write-ups. Um, they weren't minor, they were significant in big financial items. This last year, we were able to get most of our items into compliance. The one item that was not in compliance is our airport certified manual and that's, that's kind of like the bible of the airport. It has all of our information in it. Um, this last Thursday, I spent six hours with the FAA. We're sending that in this week for approval and then we have another inspection coming in July. Um, we're doing really well with the budget. Some of the, one of the things that we would like to ask for an additional fifty thousand dollars for is we have, um, an ARF building, which is our aircraft firefighting rescue building. It's where we store our firefighting equipment as well as all of our SRE, which is our snow removal equipment. Um, previous, previous to the last three years, there was a fire with one of those heaters in the building, um, and that was not replaced. So we had a very difficult time this winter keeping that, that area heated. If that area should freeze, one of our grant assurances is to make sure that the firefighting truck, along with the foam and all the chemicals we hold, don't freeze. And then we keep all our snow removal equipment in there, which would freeze as well. The bid to fix those heaters is thirty, is approximately, the estimate came in, or the bid came in at thirty-one thousand fifty-five dollars. Um, something new we'd like to do this year as well, we'd like to de-ice our runways. We are the only airport in the state of Wyoming that does not currently de-ice our runways, with the exception of Jacksonville because they're at a national park. Everybody else, every other commercial airport has de-icing ability. So we had the truck delivered actually this afternoon. The booms came in. Um, it's very exciting. We're moving in that direction. When we originally got the bid to buy the de-icing fluid, we were looking at about thirty-five hundred dollars to open the runway. That's still super expensive. We'd have to be strategic about when we would open the runways on an icing event. With the increase in the cost, they bid us, they quoted us approximately ten thousand dollars to open the runways. Um, we've talked to one of our larger clients that brings seven thirty-sevens and air buses in quite a bit during the football season. This is something that costs they're willing to incur. Um, and we were, that bid came in at twenty-four, so the de-icing fluids, what we would have to spend is twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, higher than we had originally anticipated. Um, but essentially, we're on track doing well and we do have our last, our last year out front. So that's really exciting for us. Um, we have a solid budget this year. We know exactly what we're going into. Um, we just had our budget here in our public hearing for our budget, um, last week. Where we're at, so I'd just like to put this for your consideration.
Thanks, Amy. Commissioners, any questions for?
Um, what was the item for the private pilots that you mentioned?
I didn't say private pilot specifically. What were you thinking?
Well, it was in that letter or something. Yeah, it was de-icing.
Oh, the de-icing?
Oh, just de-icing, okay.
Yeah, we, I mean, the, it would help, it will help open the runways for them as well. It, it, we wouldn't lay the de-icing fluid just for, it would, it would have to be an event. It has to be a strategic, um, a strategic thought. We wouldn't even land for the very first SkyWest, but if we had two or three SkyWest canceled and we had an icing event for three days, we would open those runways. But I think we would have to be strategic about it and see how effective it is. It will be our first year de-icing. Um, and if a private customer comes in and needs that runway opened differently than specifically for part one thirty-nine issues, we would charge for that, to try and reduce some of that cost.
Maybe you have periodically, um, had something come up that you're not in compliance. Um, do you anticipate anything else besides once you submit this handle?
I, so that's kind of the way the airport has worked is we think we're in full compliance until we find out we're not, did something. We have invited all of our oversight agencies out to visit with us. Uh, I get, I hear those complaints as well. In fact, I recently called the FAA and said, are we, do we have a complaint or are we in compliance? We're in full compliance according to them. Um, so all of our oversight agencies right now say that we are in full compliance. They have assured us we are. We certainly are open to bringing anyone on the field of looking at stuff. We occasionally have questions to bring, bring our oversight agencies out. But right now, all of our grant assurances are in compliance, uh, everything. Some things we're in the process of working on, like getting different, um, rules and regulations, minimum standards, all of those things. We're moving into a badging system. So those are not out of compliance because the oversight agencies know we're working to get those completed. I'm sorry, what did you say about the pilot?
Um, it says provide, your letter says provide aircraft de-icing to private aviators.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, the private, thank you. The private aviators, what, um, not all aircraft, so we, we have a lot of business. Saratoga brings in a lot of business, but they don't have private de-icing, so we're able to take in Gulfstream citations though, and such to, to de-ice the private aircraft. Um, it's not typically your, your single engine or the smaller aircraft, but we are able to accommodate those planes in. Not all one thirty-nine airports do that for private aviators.
Any other questions? So Amy, I have fifty thousand total at approximately twenty-five thousand de-icing fluid for the runway. Is that?
Correct, twenty-five thousand for the de-icing fluid and, uh, thirty-one thousand for the, it's fifty thousand total. We'll cover the difference. Um, just too unexpected.
Okay, I do have a question. Um, I'm the Dennison hangar.
Yes.
So it's my understanding that, um, the airport is their first ride of refusal. And pay a hundred and five thousand for them. However, the last, uh, uh, hangar that sold was for like, in that same type of hangar, was forty-five thousand. So why did the airport pay sixty thousand more than they should have for that?
We actually didn't even get into negotiation on the price. We had a, there was another aviator that signed a contract willing to pay that price. So Chuck Dennison and the individual that was purchased in the hangar came to the agreement on that price. So we didn't have the ability to negotiate on the price. The price was put in front of us, the contract was put in front of us that they had already agreed to, and the airport then did their first ride of refusal.
So why did they refuse to allow the individual to buy it?
I don't think they refused to buy it. They decided it was a, it was a good, it's a good revenue stream. So hangars are, in fact, we were getting ready to go to the Wyoming, this, or the Business Council and ask for money to put up hangars. Hangars are the, are number one, one of the number one revenue streams for airports. So with our goal being long-term sustainability, we are looking for every opportunity to create some sustainability and some revenue.
Well, good, but it's, you, it appears to me you paid forty-five thousand dollars more. No, you paid sixty thousand more than what you should have paid for that hangar. And, um, but that's, uh, me could use it due to comparison needed. And, uh, I'm appalled that Jody Shay gets eight thousand dollars a month for the work that she does. Paul did that. And to me, I'm just, I've been looking at this as just not good use of money from the airport and, yeah.
So I mean, I, uh, have to thank you not only as a commissioner, but as a pilot, um, for the work that's been done out there. Knowing that fuel is stopped every day is comforting to me. So that means the water is taken off the fuel. That wasn't, uh, something that happened during my first part of my career flying out of Laramie Regional Airport. It's also nice to know, um, that people are trained should there be an accident. And so, uh, there are costs associated for leaving things undone. Quite honestly surprised that the FAA let that airport go as long as it did. And I'm thankful that you guys worked with forty-five different FAA violations, uh, to get it under control. One is a lot. Forty-five is unbelievable. Um, and so, um, thank you. Um, and we'll take this under consideration. I appreciate it.
Forty-five, serious.
Thank you. It's, it's a, a great team out there. It's a team effort. There's a lot of, a lot of moving parts, a lot of support. So thank you.
Thanks. Awesome. Um, item nine, present for approval, the recommendation renaming, of the renaming of Swastika Lake, just to catch everybody up where we were two weeks ago. Ms. Sanders, Lindsay Sanders sent the, uh, Board of Generating Names, um, uh, the opportunity, uh, they can, a person can submit a name, um, to the board, um, and they can consider it. Uh, they like to, the board likes to hear from the local elected officials since it's Albany County. Um, Ms. Sanders submitted, uh, documentation to get Swastika Lake named, uh, for obvious reasons, uh, to Fortune Lake, which is, um, the original intent of the word swastika in religious and cultural, uh, histories. And so, um, it appears, um, that also Kim Biner, who represents Albany County Historic Society, um, heard that and, and they have suggested Night Lake after Samuel Knight. Um, and so we'll start with that conversation. And Lindsay, I'm going to start with you and then we'll go to Kim. The floor is yours. Um, first of all, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Um, I do really do appreciate it.
Oh, um, I, uh, it's my pleasure. It's my pleasure to be here again, Commissioners. Um, I'm Lindsay Sanders. I am, um, I'm here just sure to not say anything new, but reiterate my petition to change the name of Swastika Lake, um, for the reasons that stated, I stated previously. I have, I am, I am in full support. I just want to make sure that the, the Commissioners know, and you all know that of, that if there is a more appropriate name that is reflective of Albany County, um, that I am in support of that, of, of changing the name to something that might be, uh, more cultural, more appropriate, um, and reflective of, of, of the county. So I look forward to Kim's, uh, you know, what he brings to the table and I've read his proposal. So, um, my, my goal here is really to, to remove a name that is so painful to many people. And that is accomplished whether or not we use Fortune Lake or whether we use Night Lake. So I will answer any questions you have, but at that point, I'll just sort of pause there and.
Thank you, Lindsay. Any questions for Lindsay? Okay, Kim, we're going to head it over to you. Kim, good evening. Floor is yours, please. You're muted, Kim. Thank you.
Yeah, well, hey, I was going to walk down from my house at Twelfth Street to join you guys and, and see your beautiful new digs, but I was afraid the very robust mosquitoes might carry me away. So, instead, here I am, uh, virtually. Um, setting the communism canard aside, as it is not applicable to Albany County, I'd like to point to two items in Commissioner Jones' statement at the last meeting and add a couple of items. First, the Swastika brand, while still registered, is no longer used in Albany County. Albany County Ranch Historians Dixie Knight May and Shirley Lilly wrote an article for the Boomerang in two thousand two about the Swastika Ranch. And in their research for the article, they talked to the person who has that brand registered. And he said, "We no longer use the brand because of quote, negative connotations." So it's still on the books, but apparently not used. My second point concerns the use of the image by Native Americans. A proclamation signed on February twenty-eighth, nineteen forty in Tucson by representatives of the Hopi, Navajo, Apache, and Tohono O'odham, formerly Papago tribes, renounced and banned the use of the swastika on their artwork. The text of the document read, "Because the above ornament, which has been a symbol of friendship among our forefathers for many centuries, has been desecrated recently by another nation of peoples. Therefore, it is resolved that henceforth, from this date, and this date on and forevermore, our tribes renounce the use of the emblem, commonly known today as the swastika, on our blankets, baskets, art objects, sand paintings, and clothing." So I just wanted to add some context to, uh, Commissioner Jones' statement. Other than that, uh, you have our proposal and we certainly hope that you will, uh, adopt our proposal and send it forward to the Wyoming, uh, Board of Geographic Names and then it will go on to the Bureau of Geographic Names at the, at the federal level. Thank you.
Jim, any questions, um, for Kim? Anybody in the public like to make a comment about, uh, Swastika Lake or the change to Fortune or Night Lake, which is presently in force? Those are the two submitted documents with, uh, for geographical names. About online, but anybody like to make a, a statement online? Okay, Commissioners, any?
Yes, because I did not have a question. I was short. I want to thank Robert Kraft for his informative letter that he sent. Um, in no way am I trying to promote antisemitism. I want to promote open education and discussion of history. Have the beautiful teach the atrocities of history. My intention was not to pick a fight. It is important to remember that the Nazi party stole the universally beloved symbol to trick people into thinking the Nazis were good. However, the veterans of the Allied armies that liberated Europe did represent the positive of the ancient swastika symbol representing good luck and good fortune, well-being, welfare, right action, world of pro- prosperity, worldly enjoyment, and spiritual liberation. The Allied army stood up against the evil of the Nazi party and brought the Jewish population, as well as all people, hope, goodwill, and spiritual liberation. From my understanding, the schools no longer require the story of Anne Frank to be read. Many people today believe the Holocaust is not truly part of history, but just a story. I believe this is part of the impetus for the rise of antisemitism, Zenitism. We have, we have a culture that cleanses, disinfects, and neuters all aspects of history. The rest of the story is not being told. So as a result, we will repeat history. Today, our government is employing Nazi top, na- Nazi tactics to divide people in this country, pitting one group against another. It is pain, painfully clear. People do not know history as they are following the pipe piper. We need to know all of history, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Most people have no idea of the double-sided history of the swastika. It is evident the schools are failing as antisemitism is rising. As an example, I learned more about biology, habitat, land management while hunting and fishing with my father as a little girl than I ever did in school. We need to take any and every opportunity for education. Changing the name of Swastika Lake removes the occasion to learn a history lesson about the greatest atosity in history. Keep beautiful Swastika Lake name to aid in the teaching of the good, the bad, and the ugly. Remember, limiting knowledge and removing history are calling cards of communism. And I see a text. Dear Terry, obviously, those who want to change the lake name have no desire to bring out the good meaning of our educated and educating our citizens about the original definition of the swastika. And this came to me from, um, Albany County historian Dixie May.
Commissioner Odera?
I have a comment other than yes, I guess it's not on anything.
Agreed. Um, and so, um, any other conversation? I entertain a motion for item number nine, please.
I move that we approve the recommendation of renaming Swastika.
Fortune or Night? Second, um, so moving to second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, got all the favors, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side, please.
Nay.
That motion carries, uh, Swastika Lake, we're now going to come Night Lake. Thank you, Kim, or working with the, um, County Historical Society. Thank you, Lindsay, for bringing this to our attention as is, um, nephew of a person who died in World War Two. Um, I do appreciate, uh, you knowing, uh, bringing that to our attention. Thank you. Awesome. All right, let's move on to item ten. Present for discussion, the Beach Street Project and the Laramie Public Art Coalition, one percent allocation. Bailey, uh?
I'm going to Jake.
All right, Jake.
Sheriff Commissioners, thank you. Um, I, I just want to bring this to your attention that, and Laura McDermott is here as well for additional questions that I probably won't be able to answer, but I'm going to give it a shot. And, um, according to state statute, um, title sixteen, chapter sixty-two, uh, one percent of total project cost or a hundred thousand dollars, that not to exceed a hundred thousand is intended or required to be, um, allocated towards art on a project. And since this is a project, it exceeds the one hundred thousand dollars, um, and we will likely be using state funding. We will be required to follow this and, um, incorporate some artwork into this project. And I just wanted to get it on your radar so that when we talk about it in the future, there is, um, you know, if you're understanding where it comes from and why we're doing it. And, yeah, there's many different aspects of, of art that we can pursue. Um, there is, um, I actually found this on Elpac's website. It's Albany County Wyoming Public Art Regulatory Framework. And it, um, kind of gives some guidance on how the county is to approach, um, public art in Albany County and in their, uh, in their buildings and, and capital projects. Um, and, and there's many different ways we can do it. Um, sculptures, painting, murals, photography, drawings, um, prints, mixed media, electronic, uh, media, and, and so on and so forth. And so I, I'm actually going to, I think, if you'll come up here and describe the artist call process. I think what we are going to do as we move forward, probably get an art, uh, get a artist onboard with the architect so we can incorporate some of these items in the building, um, instead of trying to climb somewhere to plump down a hundred grand. We want to incorporate it into the building. So it, it goes a little farther and maybe it looks a little nicer. But if I could get you to share kind of how we would go on the artist call.
Sure, yeah. Um, so, thank you for having me. Good to see you all. Um, so what we would do is submit a call for artists and this is something that's very similar to what we did for the courthouse artwork, right? So we would assemble a selection committee of, um, people from the counties, some community members that would sit on that committee. Um, and they would review the artists that are submitted, submit their work, um, to be considered for this project. Um, something that Jake and I have talked about, um, he said, is getting them onboard, the artists onboard really early. So different from the project here is that was installed much later after the building was opened. But if we can get an artist onboard sooner, they're able to collaborate and hopefully integrate more into what is happening there, um, which could create some really, really interesting results. Um, so that would allow us to do, I think, some really incredible things, although that's, you know, like, like window work or whatever that makes the building, um, you know, look really incredible, that things that are already happening that the artist can learn to.
Commissioners, any questions?
So Laura, you presented us, or presented, uh, um, two scenarios.
Yes.
Um, one would focus on having more local artists and yet it would be more of a casual search.
Right. So I actually prefer that scenario. Um, just the, the two, the two, like sort of double call, if you will. Um, because a project that would involve an artist, um, not to say that it couldn't be a local artist, but it will widen our, um, search and potentially allow for, um, somebody who has a lot of experience working in that way with architects to be involved in the project. If we do the two calls, um, we could focus then one call being purely for a local artist to create work. Not that we wouldn't invite local artists to apply to the other calls as well, but I think that's sort of a nice thing to do. Um, because a lot of our artists in Albany County have not worked in public space before. So one thing that we do at Elpac is we really foster and nurture first-time artists in public spaces. Um, and that's a lot of our artists here, but working on a project that's, you know, maybe eighty thousand dollars, ninety thousand dollars might be intimidating for someone. Um, so that would give us, I think, a bigger scope of what we're working on.
I would like a call to go to Wyoming.
Sure.
I want the money that we spend to stay in Wyoming.
Yeah. And, and that's, and that's fair too. And I think, you know, a lot of times, um, we can, and that's something that this, the state, um, always does a preference for Wyoming artists. They don't limit it to Wyoming artists either, but, um, Wyoming artists are given preference in the selection process. Often, um, what we, you know, when you really dig into what the budget is for a public art project is, um, that money, even if it's project, is that money, even if it's going to somebody who may not be a Wyoming artist, a lot of it is staying here anyways in terms of what they're using, who they're bringing onboard to help them with their project. So that gets cycled back into the Wyoming economy as well. But, that's fair.
Jake, could you tell me that state statute again? That was kind of surprising.
It is, it is. Yeah, it's Wyoming state statute, Title 16, Chapter 6, Section 802, and there's a, there's a subsection A and a subsection B.
Yeah. Kind of like that. I think that's great. Well, I really do appreciate this conversation. I think it makes a lot of sense. You know, I just think about state law, some of those words, those need to be thought about in the architecture, if that's somewhere you want to go, right? So, thank you. Will you guys, Laura, will Elpac make a recommendation? It's not formal recommendation, this is just a discussion.
I think so. The way I kind of perceive it progressing is, well, like in RFP or a call, we'll just bring that to the commission and you can come up.
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Item 11 says, present for approval, the right-of-way grant temporary use permit from the Bureau of Land Management for Pilot Hill. Bailey, I think this.
Yeah. I don't know where Sarah is. She usually is here. So sorry. She didn't talk to her. She said she was. So all through the.
Go up to the broken bridge.
Go ahead, yeah. Anyways, Sarah approached me about the agreement with PLM for right-of-way on the Pilot Hill property. It's for 55 acres for them to be a hiking trail. It's, the agreement's only for three years. There is no money exchanged in it, it's just for permission to do these. Jennifer, you have any issues with that?
Would you have an idea why it's only for three years?
No, Jennifer Ross.
That was the same question that I had, but I don't know.
Yeah, my, I mean, my thought would be maybe it's a PLM thing, but I don't, I don't know. And we, I can reach out to Sarah and ask her.
Yeah.
I'm very sure it's a PLM thing.
Okay.
Because I'm sure they would want, Pilot Hill would want more just because that's what they're doing. But I think.
Well, I think they would get, you know, they'll look at how the project's going, all those different things, and they want to be up about it to retrieve that.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion for item 11.
I move that we approve item 11 as presented. Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say if I was saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. I oppose the exception. I entertain a motion for item 12. Item 12, present for approval, quote, "One technologies at Xerox company for VMware support and licensing in an amount not to exceed $16,351," even. Adam, are you with us tonight?
Adam is not tonight.
He's not with us tonight. Commissioners, did you need any other big instructions you packing? So we would need to table it, or do you feel like you could make a decision based on what time it's back? This is budgeted out of Adam's budget, and so this is essentially over an approval of things he's budgeted.
We need to have it forward.
I was going to say, it's a licensing, his VMware is part of the whole email system and everything that he talked about. It's the whole thing of it, that he has it in his budget. So, yeah. If you have any other questions, I can hear you.
I entertain a motion for item number 12.
I move that we approve the call for new technology for an amount not to exceed $16,351. Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say if I was saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. I oppose the exception. That motion carries. Item 13, present for approval, agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming, by the Albany County Assessors Office and Tom and Wyatt Pickett and Company Incorporated for industrial appraisal services. Chelsea, good evening, and the floor is yours. Chelsea, I can't hear you if you're trying to talk. And you're muted according to the screen I'm looking at.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Got you. Better, thank you.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners. This is the contract with Albany County and TY Pickett for the appraisal services of Mound Cement, Pete Lee, and now for the independent power producers, the wind farms. It is a two-year contract, and so this year with adding the wind farms, we're looking at a $2,000 increase, and then next year it'll be a $5,000 increase.
Thank you, Chelsea. Any other questions for Chelsea? Do you have a question for Laura?
I move that we approve item 14 as presented. Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say if I was saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. I oppose the exception. That motion carries. 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19 are all removed from the agenda. That moves us down to item 20. Present for approval, grant application to Wyoming Energy Authority for their local government retrofit, an amount of $25,000 for replacement of lighting in the Albany County Courthouse detention center. Bailey, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is the agreement, or, sorry, the application I kind of brought to you a month or so ago. We had decided to go ahead and apply for the courthouse or the detention center. They're allowing us to put in both of them in our application. I do have to talk to Shipoo, and I got an email back from Shipoo today in regards to the courthouse. They asked if any historic lighting would be replaced. I asked them to define historic. So, we will see what that comes back at. But I could see them having a few more issues with the courthouse, so maybe it may be in our best interest to do the detention center this time, and then the courthouse with our own funding. The courthouse itself is not on the National Historic Registry. Yeah, it's not on that list, so I don't know why they may have an issue, but I did. So, we'll, we'll see what they come back and say. I was still waiting on a little bit of information from Anthony. I know he's new and doesn't know, so I was just waiting for him to gather that information, and then I'll finish it up in seconds.
Thank you, Bailey. Any questions?
Yeah, Bailey, this is approved. Is it for the full amount of $25,000, or would they give partial?
Well, our, after talking with Sheriff Abalons, we think that it'll be well over $25,000 to do the detention center or the courthouse, so it would be in the full amount. I actually anticipate us needing to provide more match. I only am including the mandatory $10,000 in the application, and that is something that I will possibly have to come back to you if we receive the funding.
Any other questions, Bailey? Bailey, thank you so much. Appreciate it. An entertaining motion, right? Second?
Second.
Oh, second. Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say if I was saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. I oppose the exception. Item 41, discussion, Albany County Strategic Plan. Hey Bailey, it's on the list.
All right, so, I'm going to be a broken record here because I need this to happen. Lots of things I've been at recently, especially the grant summit I went to last week, strategic plan's your biggest thing. Not even necessarily a strategic plan, just plans in general. Like Rob should probably have a road plan, and Chad may need to have some fire plans. But, any case, we need to have plans. In order to get funding, in order to be organized, we have to have plans to know what we're going after. So I know you guys have talked about it in budget, you guys put $10,000 aside. I'd ask you to actually rename that, not just specifically be strategic plan, but county plans in general, to allow us to use some of those funds to help do all of these plans that need to be done. The more organized we are at the beginning, it makes my job a lot easier, it makes it more eligible for more funding, things like that. So, I'm going to just be a broken record, just I know you guys are all in agreement now, but just making sure. I have reached out to business council, she's not gotten back to me. I did talk to a different rep at business council last week, and she said, yes, absolutely, they still do it, and she was going to put me in contact with so-and-so, and then that person was there for like an hour. So, I reached out to our region lead at business council, and I've not heard back from her yet, but I anticipate them being able to help us and move forward. Tracy today actually sent me an email from Laramie Business Alliance, and Tri-Hydro is actually putting on a strategic planning thing. So Tracy, Kayla, myself, and Brady are going to attend that July, and just kind of get our foot in the door with all this. I know it's going to be a long process, and we can't do it all overnight, but it's something that I personally feel that the company needs to have.
That's a must.
Yeah. So any questions in regards to it?
No, but thank you for getting all rolling and making phone calls.
Of course.
I move to just discuss. Well, then I will. We discussed it though.
Bailey, I'm our support, we put it in the budget.
Thank you.
What you checked from Sege's support. So, and I agree with you, and I think it'd be nice to have you guys go and have some insight into strategic plans, because a lot can be done previously before you get into the room, and that's usually been helpful for me when I've been in strategic plans at work, I did. So, thank you. Item 22, present for approval, agreement about Wyoming Department of Health, Public Health Division, Albany County WIP program in Albany County. Kristen, good evening.
Good evening. So this contract is one that we have every year between the Wyoming Department of Health and Albany County. Albany Counties basically are like fiscal flow-through, and the Wyoming Department of Health reimburses the county 100% for all of the expenditures, and then contributes an extra 5% admin fee of salaries and benefits. Really, the only change to the contract this time is it used to just be an annual one, now they're moving it to five years. So this one should go from July 1st, '23 through June 30th, '28.
Thank you, Kristen.
Yeah.
Any questions? Great organization and to be recognized. How you guys have been the last few years. I entertain a motion for item.
I move that we present item 22 as presented. Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say if I was saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item 23.
Chris.
23, for consideration, request for exemption for large track subdivision process situated in Section 23, Township 17 North, Rain 74 West of the 6th privatey. Joy.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners. So, Ms. Al from Great Hope, President of the Diamondy Ranch, is requesting an exemption for large track subdivision regulation. This is to create approximately seven tracts, 35 to 70 acres from a 317.8 acre tract plant. In accordance with Albany County Subdivision Resolution, Chapter 5, Section 5, the requirements are they provide a record of survey, they address water rights, provide a water supply study for any proposed water system, or provide the disclaimer, no proposed central water supply system, or, and the division shall create 10 or less parcels. Based on this information and our review, the request large tracks exemption meets a criteria needed to grant the exemption.
Can you repeat like the last sentence that you just said?
Based on the information provided in our planning office review, the request of large track exemption meets the criteria needed to grant the exemption.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Any questions? Any questions? I entertain a motion for item 23.
I move that we approve item 23 as presented. Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say if I was saying aye, please.
Aye.
I oppose the exception. That motion carries. Item 24, present for consideration, a request for exemption for large track subdivision process situated in Section 19, Township 14 North, Rain 75 West of the 6th privatey. Joy, once again, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this is the same type of exemption as previous item. And this one, Nancy Kern, Daniel McDonald, Phyllis Rams, are tenants in common, they're requesting an exemption from large track subdivision regulation to create approximately three tracts ranging from 35 to 65 acres from a 440.9 acre tract plant. In accordance with the Albany County Subdivision Resolution, Chapter 5, Section 5, they provided a record of survey, they addressed water rates and property. They also provided the disclaimer, no proposed central water supply system, and their division is creating 10 or less parcels. Based with this information and our review, the request of large tracks exemption meets the criteria needed to grant the exemption.
Thank you, Joy. Any questions? I entertain a motion for item 24.
I move that we approve item 24 as requested. Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say if I was saying aye, please.
Aye.
I oppose the exception. That motion carries. Item 25, present for approval. Thank you, George. Lease agreement between the Albany County Board of Commissioners, Seracan Beach, and this state, Pendleton, Wyoming Post 114, the Albany County Prosecuting Attorney's Office.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, this item and the next item are for the building at 112 South. The rent has been historically split between victim witness and the county attorney's office. So, and there is a lease increase this year of 3%, which between the two properties ended up being just over $500 for the year in total.
And what was that increase for? How about?
Well, we haven't had a lease increase since we've been in the property, I don't think. And, when I, when they mentioned it, they were, mentioned increasing water rates and, there was one other thing they mentioned, if I remember right now. So, that's, and our rent over there was $1,450 in total. So now it ups it to just under $1,500 a month, which is a great huge space, and gives us all some access and conference space for when we have meetings in our office for meetings.
Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for item 25.
I move that we approve item 25 as presented. Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say if I was saying aye, please.
Aye.
I oppose the exception. That motion carries. Looks like, I guess we have to do this one again.
I move that we approve item 26 as presented. Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say if I was saying aye, please.
Aye.
I oppose the exception. That motion carries. Item 27, present for approval, First Amendment to agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wilken Enterprises LLC for debitorial services at the Albany County Courthouse Building. And it looks like Jennifer, you're on the.
It is me, again, it's me. So this is, after talking to Anthony, he would like to extend the contract with Wilken for another six months. Since Anthony is new in his role, he wanted to get a feel for everything that's going on, have a chance to sit down and talk with Gary, and make sure everything is as it needs to be.
I entertain a motion for item 27 then, please.
I move that we approve item 27 as presented. Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say if I was saying aye, please.
Aye.
I oppose the exception. That motion carries. Thank you, Jennifer. Present for approval, invitation to bid for 2022 or newer side-by-side altering vehicle and trailer for use by the Albany County Fire Ward, and direct the clerk to advertise. Jack, good evening.
Thank you, Commissioners. Our office has currently a four-wheeler that goes back to fire wardens. It's antiquated, and the federal agencies, specifically the BLM, have all but outlawed them. Safety reasons. We've heard a lot of firefighters on four-wheelers. They're fun, but they hurt a lot of firefighters, so they've done away with those. Forest services phasing them out, and it's just time for us to get something we can utilize. This will be primarily used for, well, fire response. Some of the key things we'll use it for is inserting medical folks in a medical emergency, transporting equipment, reconnaissance. It just are really, really useful in what we do, transporting troops. This would be a four-seater, it's not a toy, it's more of a tool. So, we'll be able to use that backcountry. It's also going to be located in the north end of the county, available to the sheriff's office, search and rescue. If we have something, they will have to transport one of theirs down here. There'll be one up there that would be utilized for search and rescue operations as well. These funds will come out of Title III funds, so I'm not requesting any money. My Title III funds should be sufficient to cover the costs, which is, we're not sure exactly what this will, like, price-wise when it comes in, but I anticipate in the neighborhood of $25,000 to $30,000 trailer-ish.
Any questions?
Do you have trailers that, or are you including?
We're going to have to get a.
Our office has currently a four-wheeler that goes back to fire wardens. It's antiquated. And the federal agencies, specifically the BLM, have all but outlawed them. Safety reasons. We've heard a lot of firefighters on four-wheelers. They're fun, but they hurt a lot of firefighters. So they've done away with those for services phasing them out, and it's just time for us to get something we can utilize. This will be primarily used for, well, fire response. Some of the key things we'll use it for is inserting medical folks in a medical emergency, transporting equipment, reconnaissance. They just are really, really useful in what we do. Transporting troops. This will be a four-seater. It's not a toy. It's more of a tool. So we'll be able to use that backcountry. It's also gonna be located in the north end of the county and available to the sheriff's office, search and rescue. If we have something, they won't have to transport one of theirs down here. There'll be one up there that would utilize for search and rescue operations as well. These funds will come out of Title III funds, so I'm not requesting any money. My Title III funds should be sufficient to cover the cost of this. We're not sure exactly what this will, like, price-wise when it comes in, but I anticipate in the neighborhood of $25,000 to $30,000 trailer-ish.
Any questions?
Do you have a trailer that, or are you including?
We're gonna have to get a trailer. We had.
Included in the RFP, also.
Okay.
So we had a trailer that the four-wheeler would go on. Likely, we're gonna liquidate that four-wheeler and trailer, and that's all gonna go away.
Your side-by-side will fit in the four-wheel.
No, and if you remember when Scott Davis was, I was in the back of his truck most of the time. And he utilized that quite a bit. It's had a hard life. Still runs. We still use it, but limited utility.
Sometimes it's ready to go to the home yard.
Yeah, that was done.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any other questions? Any other motions for 28?
I move that we approve item 28 as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here in Satan, all's in favor, say hi, please.
Hi. I think we need to direct the contract.
The move should personally make a motion.
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, all of us. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Item 29, present for approval, request for proposals for banking services and the direction. Tracy, good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. It is with kind of trepidation to put the banking services out to bid solely because I know what the work involves to move 270 different funds that are going through one checking account. But I would not be doing my job as county treasurer if I weren't trying to get the best interest rate on our bank accounts for the county. So in order to do that, I am going to seek bids or proposals for the banking services to see what kind of interest rates we can get. Might as well be earning money on the money that's sitting there.
And why now? Tracy?
Because the interest rates are up, for one. I could probably give you some other reasons, but.
Well, I can tell you one. We wanted Tracy to do this when she was first elected. And in being a new elected official, that would be just too overwhelming to try to do. So we said, hang off on it for a while.
I think it falls in line with the new ERP system, too. If we're gonna switch, it's better to switch before we switch all of that to the bank accounts first. Yes, and not to try to do it all at the same time. But the previous time.
Compared now.
Yes. When we switched banks, I believe it was in 2015. It was, it's probably about a one-year process to get everything switched and moved. The easy part is, you know, sign a signature card. After that, it's a little trickier with all the outstanding checks, the warrant accounts, the payroll accounts, and all those things.
Tracy, any other questions? Any other data motion for 29?
I move that we approve the request for banking services and direct the clerk to that. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here in Satan, all's in favor, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, all of us. That motion carries. Item 30, thank you, Tracy. Award the 2023, 2024 County Commissioners Renewal Scholarship. And I think you'll see here in front of you, the person who received it, the rest of it, with the alternates in this, in order, that is Christensen and Abigail Whitman. Any questions? Any other data motion for item 30?
I move that we award the 2023, 2024 County Commissioners Renewal Scholarship. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here in Satan, all's in favor, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, all of us. That motion carries. Thank you. Item 31, present for approval, changing to the July 4th, 2023 regular meeting to July 5th, 2023 due to the holidays. Kayla.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, due to the first meeting in July being on the Fourth of July holiday, we would like to move that to the third, or to the fifth, change it to the fifth on Wednesday. I think it will be easier with people maybe traveling on the weekends with it being the third on Monday. So if that's all right with you, we'll get that advertised to have that meeting on the fifth.
Yeah, do you know what this room would be? Available? Or are we kicking somebody out?
Nope. And just so you know, too, we get first rights to this room, so I try to put the commissioners' meetings on the schedule so that we don't have to kick anybody out. We do have the fourth floor, which is really nice, too. We used a lot, but now this will become available for people to use for meetings as well. So the commissioners do have first dibs on it, so.
Thanks, Kayla. Any questions?
Change it. I'll ring it in July 4th to July 5th. Is that the whole? Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here in Satan, all's in favor, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, all of us. That motion carries. Item 32, present for discussion, Albert Simpson, Easement County right away across the strip of land in and through northeast quarter, northeast quarter, section 18, township 24, rate 70 up Palmer Canyon Road by the Platt County Line. Rob?
Rob's here, but I told him I'd talk first.
Okay.
So.
I yield my time.
So this is the map that I gave you all today, is a map that Mr. Simpson had provided last year that shows the portion of the road that's in Albany County that he's talking about. The problem is that road originates in Platte County, weaves in and out of Albany and Platte County, and then goes through section 8, and then goes north, or through section 18, I'm sorry, and then goes north through section 7. The, we don't have the ability to make that a county road. There's, the way that it's outlined, it's very similar to the other roads we've discussed, like Boswell Creek, that's off of 230. Something that goes in and out of another county. We can't make it to a county road. It provides a tremendous nightmare for road and bridge if they had to maintain it or any of those things. And ultimately, that section of the road that we're talking about only serves the private properties that are in Platte County, Mr. Simpsons, and I believe there's one or two more up there. Mr. Simpson could approach the neighbors that own the property in that section 18. They're listed on the Albany County Assessor's Maps through the Greenwood Map System about getting an easement where the private road process is available through district court.
Jennifer, thank you. Rob, anything to add to that? Any questions? Just disclosure that I met with the Simpsons in this room last week. I think they just want to get the properties so that they feel like there's legal access there in their mid-80s. They wanted to wrap it up so that if something happens, they'll go to their heirs without legal problems. So Jennifer did supply me with either getting an easement through their property neighbors or the private road process, which seems a little bit onerous, but it seemed like if you dot the i's across the t's, that something that can be done.
I think so, because that road that he uses has been in place for a long time.
Yeah.
And then when it was vacated, when Palmer Canyon was vacated, it was realigned in section 18. So they didn't vacate all of Palmer Canyon like they did. They moved entirely out of section 7. And the other, whichever ones else run across there. I'd be mad at that. But there were the other sections that were Palmer Canyon used to run, but now they've moved it down through sections 18, and it's further south, Sodoboy, it's all those kinds. And that was done in 1953. And section, the road in section 7 was vacated in 1964. And I believe Simpson's brought their property in 1994. So, I mean, it's been, the other thing I would have that is if they had a title commitment when they purchased their property that showed them access that, they may have some recourse or some help through their title agency.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions, commissioners? It's tough, but there's no right answer. So, but there is an answer, and so we'll talk to Mr. Simpson and tell him what I know, and I'll copy you, Jennifer, on that. Item 33, present for approval, vote from CW.
Do you have a question?
Sure.
Um, don't, Sue and I get into something about if we're gonna agree or disagree with what they want.
So I'm sorry to interrupt. I think this was just listed as a discussion item.
Well, if Pete's going to them, then he has no idea what.
I'm gonna reiterate what Jennifer said today. We haven't approved anything. Unless, should you think we've approved something?
No, we've approved nothing. But you going without our approval or disapproval of what you're gonna tell them, we need to know.
Okay, I'll copy you guys on it. Or you're more than welcome to write the note to Simpson.
No, you can write the note, but we needed to all be in agreement on what's gonna go on. Because right now, there's no, we don't know if there's an agreement between the three of us or not.
Oh, so what you're suggesting is, well, and since this was just a discussion item, what you're suggesting is we would need like a motion.
We can have discussion that we agree or we disagree, but we need to have some sort.
Of an action.
Does not have an action. It's not left open in.
Okay. I think that's fine. You can, you could make a motion within this just to say.
Since I'm the whiner, I'll make the motion.
Well, I was gonna say with justice to however it is you wanted to word it, so to author as the chairman to communicate the information from the county attorney's office, or however it is we can make that.
So I make a motion that we agree, Sue and I agree, for Pete to talk to Simpsons, explaining to them what the county attorney has told us. And the result is that we will not be doing anything as a commission to change our roads. Second. Good.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here in Satan, all's in favor, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi. All of us. And Jennifer, if you could help me with the legal lease.
I'm happy to start a draft of an email to send to you.
Please, and I won't be, I'll send you an email. We don't need to meet anymore. They don't need to drive all the way to China or or over Canyon to talk, so.
I'm happy to do that. I will send you a draft.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 33, returning to that, maybe, Jennifer. Present for approval, vote from CWAG for purchasing security cameras and about how to exceed $14,841.5. Kayla.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, this is to update cameras in our auxiliary building that were, it was the route Adam wanted to go, but we didn't have the time, so it's just replacing what we have and updating them.
Any other questions? Any other data motion for 33 then?
I move that we approve item 33 as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here in Satan, all's in favor, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, all of us. Item 34, set special meeting for June 28th, 2023 for the final budget presentation. Any questions for that? Any other data motion for 34?
I move that we set special meeting for June 28th, 2023 at 9:30 a.m. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here in Satan, all's in favor, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, all of us. Item 35, set joint work session with city council for July 25th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m.
So this is for the STEM, for the YDOT, for their annual presentation. And then Nancy Bartholomew, the city clerk, asked if they could add a discussion on Tyler Hill, just long-term management. She doesn't think it would go more than a half an hour. So if we wanted to add it to this, or if we want to have it on a separate one, I just knew that letter there. And if you guys are all that in, the work session will be at council because YDOT is coming in person, so we'll go to their house for that meeting at 6 o'clock, so.
Okay, any other data motion for 35?
I move that we set the joint work session with the city council for July 25th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. Add to the council chair.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here in Satan, all's in favor, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, all of us. That motion carries. Item 36, prove payroll vouchers for June 2023.
I move that we pay vouchers and payroll for June 2023. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here in Satan, all's in favor, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, all of us. That motion carries. Seeing no more business before the Albany County Commission on June 20th, 2023. I'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all, and we'll see you on July 5th. If you'd like to turn in for the budget, the next meeting will be June 28th at 9:30 a.m. Thank you all. Have a nice night.
Thanks for hanging out the whole time, Rob.